All right, welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District Board of Education meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'd move approval of the agenda.
I'll second it.
Are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker.
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so the agenda is approved. Are there any requests to speak on this session? All right, and then we will recess to closed session. All right, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Castro Valley Unified School District. My name is Dot Theodore. My pronouns are she and her, and I have the honor of being your president, and we are reconvening from open session. We did not take any action in closed session. Trustee Kuziak, please read the mission statement.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsive learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board's agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the Board President, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After your allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the Board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the Board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on issues presented. The next item on the agenda is school report and recognition. Palomaros.
Yes, so we're going to welcome Dr. Tomita, who's going to start us off. Welcome, Palomaros.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Tomita, Principal of Palomaros Elementary, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. For the past several years, Palomaros students and staff have been involved in service learning projects. Service learning projects have a positive impact, not only those for whom the project benefits, but more importantly, those who are involved in the learning of the project itself. Benefits of servants' learning projects include: learning more about our relationship with the communities we engage with; learning more about our capacity for serving others and the possibility of sparking interest in a future career; growing in our awareness of cultural differences and reducing stereotypes; a better understanding of the meaning of responsible citizenship; and the development of leadership skills and personal and interpersonal development. So tonight, we will share just a snapshot of some of the projects our Hawks have engaged in over the past few years, pre-pandemic to present. So there's a few pictures from the past, and I also have to say thank you to my daughter Addison, and thank you to the digital citizenship teacher at Canyon, because my husband, as you know, has usually puts our PowerPoint presentations together, and he has been sick, and so I was struggling with this, and she was like, Mom, 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 let me, let me help you. So I have to say a special thank you to her for helping put this together for us. So I want to now invite our staff to come up, and we're going to start with Ms. Ventress, our third grade teacher.
Hello, I'm Amanda Ventress, third grade teacher at Palomaros. I'm here to talk about S-October. So one way we show caring at Palomaros is by helping those in need, and one of the ways that we decided to do that is with S-October. And we realized that a lot of shelters are missing socks. That's one of the items that's not commonly donated. And so a couple of years ago, we decided to start having families bring socks during October and donate them so that we can give them to the shelters. And we partnered with the Fesco Family Emergency Shelter in Hayward for our S-October event this year. And our school, we always set a goal, and so this year, our goal was to collect 150 pairs of socks, and even at our very small school, we collected a total of 591 pairs of socks, which was exciting, and as part of student council, we encourage the students to take ownership and help by counting the socks that we collected. And so that's what you see. We actually counted them on Halloween, so the students are in costumes. But they come to school like that every day. But they got together, they counted them, and then they presented it at our Friday Flag Meeting and said, you know, hey, this is how many socks our school collected. And it was just so awesome to look around and see all the students and families' reactions. Like, everybody's jaw just dropped because we were just so amazed at how giving our Palomaros community is. And so we're going to continue to do this throughout the years because it's just another great way we can show caring and compassion. So next is Ms. Gigi Katrina to talk about.
Hi, I'm Gigi Katrina. I'm the kindergarten teacher at Palomaros School. And right now, we're working on honoring our veterans for Veterans Day. And the big box that you see there is something new that we're doing this year. We are collecting items for a goodie bag, like snacks, school supplies, for veterans that we found that are very often forgotten. And those are student veterans at colleges. And so we're collecting items for the students at Las Pizitas College. And then our newest banner is the one with the hands on it, and we did that to represent all the veterans from the different families at our school, from our staff, families and friends. And then the one up above was from a few years ago that we did, and it's also just pictures of our family or families, of anybody that was in the service. We've also in the past had assemblies where we've had parent speakers and community speakers that are veterans come and talk to the kids. And we've also made in past years cards for people at the veterans at the Livermore Hospital. And this year, we're also celebrating by having an author from here in Castro Valley come and speak to us. Her name is Grisiel Tisonaro Sato, and she was in the Air Force, and she wrote three bilingual books. She's known by Captain Mama, and the first one was Good Night, Captain Mama, the second one was Captain Mama's Surprise, and the third one was Taking Flight with Captain Mama. And these books all came about from just her son being interested in seeing her in her uniform and asking questions about what all the patches meant. And so she's taken that a step further to explain it in all of her books, and they're really wonderful books. We have them in our library, but I'm really excited because she's coming to talk to us tomorrow. So that's just some ways that we've been giving back to our veterans and our community. Who's up next? Ms. Pyle.
Hi, I'm Amber Pyle, and I teach second grade. And a few years ago, we have the privilege of working with the Wheelchair Foundation, and this is a great opportunity for our school. The wheelchair program, it allows schools to raise money for wheelchairs, to purchase wheelchairs throughout the world, but also the students get to have a chance to see what it is like to use a chair. We were allowed to borrow a few, and you know, we had a time slot, and we got to go outside, and the students got to see how it was to move independently and also kind of serve as a caregiver, you know, moving each other around. And it was a really good experience because it just made them appreciate, like, like, it looks so fun, and it is fun at first, but it's work, like, it's a, you know, and so they developed some empathy. And also, you know, they were like, can I push you? You know, and the kids were like, no, I want to do it myself, you know, just like taking turns, and they just learned so much from the experience. But after our time was done, we realized that we had been able to purchase six wheelchairs for the foundation, and we're so excited because this year, our high school ambassador is helping us arrange for us to do it again. And so our kids this year are going to be able to participate in this program. And I know that, you know, especially our students that haven't, actually, none of our students have done it, because the ones that had done it have graduated, you know? So this is so exciting that they will get to do it.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Collard. I'm the school secretary. With our partnership with CBSCN, we've had the opportunity to participate in fruit gleaning from neighbors in our community who allow teams to come and pick fruit from their trees. Gleaning or harvesting extra fruit or vegetables has been around for centuries. It's a wonderful way to work outside and to give back to the community. Students and families work together to pick oranges, lemons, and grapefruits, and then they take them to the local food pantry. Sometimes, as you can see, the students get to have a taste of the fruits of their labor. We have participated for three years, and we are looking forward to another year of opportunity to serve in the future. Thank you. And now Mrs. Sharon Pipkins.
Hi, I'm Sharon Pipkins, and I teach first grade. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the projects that my classes have done over the years. I want to start with this quote. It's from Arthur Ashe, and it says, "From what we get, we can make a living, and from what we give, however, it makes a life." So that sense of community and importance of contributions or contributing is something that we all feel is really important for children to have. Several years back, my class started making fall decorations for a senior convalescent home here in Castro Valley. And then more recently, we made decorations for a memory care facility that's actually just right around the corner from our school. We then made, so in the pictures here, you'll see the kids have made tug toys, and we did that pre-COVID, and we were able to take a trip to the East Bay SPCA. And so the kids are making them again this year, and we'll be visiting again in the spring. And then finally, finally, we took some more pictures of the kids braiding, making their tug toys. It was very cute. And then we have, this was our first reading Under the Stars we've had since the post-pandemic, and it's an event that we've hosted in years past, and we invite families to come. And it's really just to celebrate reading, celebrate the joy of books. And we, the K-2 teachers invited K-2 families to come, and along with a lot of activities and read aloud, we also asked families if they could, if they could donate a gently used or a new book, and we were so happy, and the kids were so excited about it, that they donated these books, and we were amazed by how many books they actually did donate. And one of the kids in my class was talking about, you were reading a book called Maddie's Fridge this week, and it's kind of the same, along the same idea of contributing, but he was like, you know what? I gave away my favorite book, and he was saying how good it felt to him, and it was like, he goes, and it was a book I really, really liked. So it was just so thoughtful and kind, and I thought, boy, you know, what a, what a great thing for a child to say and a great thing for a child to feel and know that they can make a difference. So we're grateful that our community supports their children in discovering the joy of giving as well.
So we just want to end with this quote, "You must be the change you wish to see in the world." And that is what we wish for our students at Palomaros and our students in Castro Valley as a whole, that they can see that they make a difference in everything that they do, their words, their actions. And on here, I'm not going to show it to you, but I will share this with the governance team, this slideshow, because if you have a moment to watch this video clip, A Simple Act of Caring Creates an Endless Ripple. If you haven't seen it, it's amazing, and that is something that we showed our students at Palomaros, too. Okay, thank you so much.
Want to say thank you to my team. They did a great job.
Thank you, Dr. Tomita. After a couple of presentations, we'll invite you back up for questions and comments. Clinton.
I'd like to invite Ryland Compton up here with me. Give him a hand. The governance team, along with Palomaros Elementary School, are proud to honor Ryland Compton. Ryland is a Palomaros Hawk of the Year because he constantly strives to spread his hawk wings and do his best. Ryland consistently models exemplary behavior in the classroom, on the playground, and with students of all ages. He has a positive attitude and a welcoming, joyous smile that makes all people want to be in his presence. In the classroom, he is an excellent role model for other students. Ryland models kindness and compassion to everyone. His willingness to help others has made him well-liked and respected by his fellow students. His classmates describe him as kind, helpful, and funny. We're so proud to honor Ryland and the ways in which he exemplifies the character traits that we embrace at Palomaros. Congratulations, Ryland, for this recognition. You deserve it, and we are so happy for you. The governance team joins Palomaros Elementary School in honoring Ryland Compton as an outstanding student.
I want to thank Dr. Tomita and the teachers and staff at Palomaros for recognizing me for the honor of Hawk of the Year. I'd also like to thank my parents, family, and friends for helping me on the way to be the person I am.
Thank you, Ryland. Ryland, would you like to introduce the people who came with you this evening?
Hi, Dad.
Hi, Mom. Thank you.
So I'd like to invite up Nina Turner, please. The governance team, along with Palomaros Elementary School, are proud to honor Nina Turner. Nina's a valuable member of the Palomaros team. For four years, she has served as Treasurer of the Palomaros Parent Teacher Club. As Treasurer, she is involved in supporting all aspects of the inner workings of activities and events at Palomaros. This is especially challenging during the pandemic, but she continued to faithfully serve and provide support as the Treasurer. Through that role, she supports our annual Hawk-a-thon, Scholastic Book Fair, movie nights, and programs such as Art in Action, Assemblies, the Fine Arts Festival, and the PPTC Budget Committee. She's currently transitioning off the PPTC Board and is working to ensure a smooth transition to the new Treasurer. She's a positive influence in the Palomaros School community and is always willing to help out in whatever capacity is needed. Nina is the parent you appreciate having at your school. She works humbly behind the scenes to get things done, always with a positive attitude and keeping students first. Her organization and dedication to the school community through the years have been greatly appreciated. She will be missed at Palomaros. The governance team joins Palomaros Elementary School in honoring Nina Turner as an outstanding volunteer.
Not to put you on the spot, Nina, but did you want to say anything? Or, but there you are, on the spot.
I want to thank Palomaros for educating both of my children, Ty Turner and Victoria Turner, through the years. They have done really well in school and continue to enjoy learning in the Castro Valley Unified School District.
Thank you. All right, Board comments. Clinton, we'll start with you.
Just want to start off by saying what a fantastic presentation you had. A few things I want to comment on. The S-October, fantastic idea. It's so great to hear that you've taken this idea and really affected the community in a positive way, donating all those socks. At the high school, we have a clothing drive in the winter, but I don't think we take socks. So you're making up for what we couldn't get during our drive. Honoring veterans as well, that's something that the high school is also trying to do right now through various clubs, and to hear that the elementary schools are also doing is great, something very important. And of course, Veterans Day is on Friday, so it's fantastic. The Wheelchair Foundation, the funds that you raised, I think that's such an incredible program that you've got going on there, educating our students about the, what it's like to be in a wheelchair, and you know, overall promoting acceptance of everybody, while raising funds, too, at the same time. Fantastic. And then Ryland, outstanding student for sure. Definitely, go get a round of applause. Let's give her a round of applause, and why not? For what I could see in that letter, you're definitely a role model that every student in this district should try to live up to. So keep up the good work. Can't wait to see you at the high school in a few years. So fantastic. Thank you very much.
I want to congratulate Ryland. Good job on bringing your speech. I was very, very prepared. Congratulations for all of your contributions to Palomaros and to Nina. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our Castro Valley Schools. And I can speak, having been at a parents' teacher club last night. There are middle schools looking for Treasurers. And you're hired. But seriously, our parents and guardians and the families, how we contribute to our schools is a critical part of what makes our Castro Valley Schools what they are and a center as a community. I was really just impressed with each distinct activity that you're describing, and it just, how it's empathy-centric, right? All those activities, whether it's the wheelchair or the socks, just putting your students in a place where they can develop some radical empathy. And I'm very grateful for your leadership and to all of our teachers and staff at Palomaros supporting that. Thank you.
Well, thanks for the report. It's hard to know where to start here. I mean, all those projects were so good, I don't even, almost don't know what to say about them. I mean, this S-October thing, I like the, just like the name of it is really good, but it's, but it's very valuable. It's a simple item that's so important and everything. The fruit gleaning is fantastic, and I'm always happy to hear about things we have done for veterans. That's a great target audience. But the real one that I think that the superintendent and I probably know something about is the Wheelchair Foundation, because that was a big thing for Rotary last year. And so we've been, also, we're deep into that, and we heard a lot of stories about the wheelchairs going, the ones that we were collecting money for went to Mexico, and a lot of stories about how life-changing that is, you know, for people who couldn't get out, couldn't do anything, and suddenly they can get around. You know, it's amazing. So I think those are fabulous projects. So thanks very much for all of that, and once again, congratulations to Ryland and Nina. So thank you very much for the report.
Yeah, I want to thank all the people at Palomaros. It sounds like the service learning projects are just like at full capacity. They're helping others. It does help kids learn leadership skills. I think that's really great, and the cultural awareness. This S-October has already been mentioned. It's, it does have a great name. Getting snacks and school supplies for veterans that are going to school here very locally. That just sounds like what a fantastic way to get kids to be able to help veterans. And the wheelchair thing, I think, besides it being good about getting wheelchairs, I think also that whole idea of having the kids have wheelchairs and then roll in them may give them a better idea of what it's like for kids with disabilities or people with disabilities to, you know, for them to empathize with them. So I think that was really good, bringing them on campus. CBSCN, picking the fruit. We all see fruit just falling on the ground, doesn't get used. That's really, gleaning, those are great. Toys for ASPCA and the senior centers, that's a great project. And I like your, about the film as well. I have to say, congratulations to Ryland and also to Nina. Great for you to get these awards, well-deserved.
I'm going to echo everything that everyone else said, and, and I'm going to be a broken record, because all of you know that, from me, my daughter went to Palomaros, so it's just a special place where, for those of you who are here that are online that don't know about Palomaros, it's a one-room classroom where kids get this wonderful environment, and everybody is so dedicated and cares so much about the community, and it's this tight little knit community where everybody knows everybody. I mean, you can't not know everyone when you go to Palomaros, and there's this special sauce of care. It's weaved in everything that you do, and it's obvious that you care so much about your students and our community. And so I just want to say thank you for everything that each one of you do to create such a community up there. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I think Palomaros, besides just being a beautiful space, it's a small school with a big heart, and that's really what it is. And that's why all of these things that you've done, really kind of getting students to see what it means to help others, it's a habit that they will have for the rest of their lives. And I love how you're looking, finding the need and then addressing it. And when I, when you were going through all of the different things, there's not a shortage of needs in our communities, so there's always something else to do. And I love all the things that you did. And Dr. Tomita is an amazing leader, and the staff at Palomaros, even though it's a small staff, right, so they don't have like three of the same grades, or they can, like some big schools, but they're all very collaborative and wonderful, wonderful, working together. Ryland, I loved what, how they described you, but then when you talked about your family and how you thanked them, besides being kind and compassionate that they described, I think the other word for that is humility. You were awesome. You're a great kid, just keep being you. And of course, Mrs. Turner, and I have to say, Mr. and Mrs. Turner are in the community all the time, contributing, helping, and she's very quiet doing all that work there. And I am sure wherever she is next year, we'll love to have you. We'll love to have you. So thank you so much.
And I get the last word. Thank you for a great presentation. It tugged at all my heartstrings, providing opportunities for kids to learn how to give back to the community, and it's so important. It's such a great lesson that they will take with them all of their lives. So thank you for providing all of those opportunities and so many different ways to give back. I know all your teachers were in the presentation. Is there anyone else in the room that you want to introduce that didn't present from your campus?
that didn't present from your campus? Well, thank you for coming this evening and thank you for your presentation. The next item on the agenda is the Student Board Member Report. Clinton, you're up.
All right. Around the district, students are planning to participate in the light parade this Saturday. Whether that's marching along with everybody or just going to participate, they're going to be there. Independent Elementary School is celebrating Indigenous Peoples Month by providing resources to families like books and websites with information about the Aloney People and also providing interactive activities that families can participate in. Proctor has had a successful walkathon and carnival, raising over $72,000 for classroom libraries, playground equipment, equipment and more. I know. Yeah. Successful to say the least. The Castro Valley Adult School is offering pickleball beginner clinics for anyone interested. Sounds fantastic. I hope I got the number right, by the way, now that everyone's reacting to it. Seventy seven. I know. I mean, yeah.
You, you, you did.
I did? Fantastic. Yeah. The Castro Valley Middle School Tennis Team are the Fall 2022 Alameda County Junior Tennis League Champions. Canyon Creekside Team beat Palomares and John Muir on October 7th for the ACJTL Championship with the final match of 7-0. This very strong team swept all opponents during the 2022 season. Very impressive. And then at the high school, the College and Career Center has hosted a number of college representatives over the course of this month. Students have had the chance to meet with representatives from UCLA, UC Santa Cruz, the University of San Francisco and Cal State East Bay, and many more. They're also offering workshops for seniors to help with the application process. Those applications are coming up. I'm not a senior myself, but they're coming up. So it's great that they're helping everyone out. Radium Girls, the high school's fall play, has their final performances this Thursday and Saturday. My final performance is this Thursday, unfortunately. It'd be great if we could get as much of the community there as possible. There's been so much work put into this production by all the amazing students within the theater program at the high school. So if you're free, that's Thursday and Saturday at 7 o'clock at the Castro Valley Center for the Arts. And then my last thing, our canned food drive started a few weeks ago and will continue until the Friday before Thanksgiving break. They've already collected over 1,000 cans over at the high school. And we're hoping to get a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. Superintendent's report.
Okay, my report. So CVUSD has been on an incredible journey with our board's leadership, including board members Joe Los, Monica Lee, John Barbieri and Charmaine Banther in the last seven years, eight, seven, eight years, to bring about changes necessary to move all of us in a direction with positive outcomes for all students, grounded on an equity framework. Here are just a few things our CVUSD team has accomplished in the last eight years. We have invested in robust professional development for our staff, have offered our Students' Choice Virtual Academy new CTE programs, open access for advanced courses and dual enrollment, deepened our focus and increased services to support our students' social emotional well-being in TK 12, built a wellness center and added additional staff and programs to support students' social emotional well-being, implemented a shared data analysis protocol, reduced suspensions, expulsions and other exclusionary discipline, adopted restorative practices, created a long, a strong multi-tiered system of support, elevated the voice of historically marginalized groups through building relationships and providing space for parents and students, have implemented a dual immersion program, worked to hire diverse, highly qualified staff that is more reflective of the diversity of our students, worked collaboratively with our bargaining units to reach agreements that reflect our commitment to hiring and retaining highly qualities, qualified staff, supported our community at adult school by creating pathways to certificate programs, GED, ESL, and opportunities for our adults with special needs, reviewed and changed policies to ensure that they reflect our commitment to equity, such as the dress code policy and our grading policy, which is continuing with our efforts around standards-based grading, and have developed, revised and adopted curriculum to be more reflective and responsive to the needs of all students. So I want to take a point of privilege and share that tonight, as President Dot Theodore is stepping off the board, and I reflect on our district's journey, we share our deepest gratitude for service, for her service on this board the last eight years. We thank her for her strong commitment to public education, her clear stance on matters of equity and unwavering support of those under-resourced and underserved, students of color, the LGBTQ plus community and other marginalized communities. We will miss her at the dais, but know that she will continue to be a powerful and important voice on our continuous journey, equity journey, to ensure all students and families have equal access to the best opportunities possible. Thank you so much, Dot. I also have, I also have a certificate of recognition from Assemblymember Quirk. On behalf of the California State Assembly, you are hereby recognized for your contributions as a Castro Valley Unified School District Board Member and your commitment to the community and beyond, for your advocacy toward public education and leadership, for promoting wellness and advocating for increased focus and support for students' social emotional well-being and for restorative practices. Your dedication to the service of others is commendable. Dated this ninth day of November 2022. Bill Quirk.
I'm going to take over for just a moment as vice president. And I'd also like to say a couple of words. Public service isn't always the most thankful job. You do it because you care. And over the last eight years, Dot Theodore, our president, has contributed countless hours, many days, late nights, thinking about how we can create a community that is equitable, safe, and everyone in this community belongs. She not only dedicated eight years, but prior to that, has always been involved in our community. Most people know who Dot Theodore is in our community because of the work that she does. And all of her work will never be forgotten. Our community has changed because of the things that you have done. And you have started things to help us be better. And though you are leaving, you are still a part of us and we will always be a part of you. Thank you for your service. With that, we're going to take a three minute break. For those of you who need to go home and do homework, we appreciate you coming to our board meeting, but we have some great things happening later, just in case you want to stay around. We've got our California School Employees Association and the Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. We've got our consent agenda, really exciting things coming up. Recognition of Assemblymember Dr. William Quirk. And if you haven't heard about it, we have an action that's on our consideration to approve an agreement between this district and HARD on some really great stuff at Canyon Middle School. Equitable grading practices. Looking at approving a certificated substitute rate increase and approving the personnel report. So if you want to stay around, that's great. Otherwise, we'll see you all back here at 6:45.
Coming back to our meeting. Do we have anyone from CSCA or CVTA on the line? All right, moving along. We have one public comment for an item that is not on the agenda. Are there any one requesting online? All right, Peter Rosen.
Thank you, everyone. I want to build on the accolades. Dot, I'm here to thank you for eight years of service to our community. This is a huge commitment and especially as a working parent that I want to personally thank you for that commitment and for what's involved. And I want to thank your family for loaning you to us for eight years. Thanks a lot and it's appreciated, everything you've done. So thanks.
We're going to move on to the consent agenda.
We'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Given that, Quentin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary? Dolly?
Yes.
President Theodore? And I will vote yes. And so the motion passes 5-0. We will move on to our reports, discussions and action items. Number A, we are really excited for this recognition tonight for someone who has contributed very, very greatly to our community. Arvin?
William Quirk. Our assembly member to the podium. We have a proclamation to present to you in recognition of all of your great work. I'm not going to read every word, but, but I think what I want to say is in, in, I know as a superintendent and as board members, we're always making sure that our students are served well and our voice is heard in sacral. sure that our students are served well, and our voice is heard in Sacramento, and you have been absolutely amazing. I have worked with lots of different people, but Dr. Quirk is available every single time we have needed to ask a question, we have needed for him to advocate for us at this state, and I can't thank you enough. We wanted to congratulate you on all of the work that you have done, and I'm just going to read a couple of these things. I know Ms. Loss, where, no losses here, and she actually helped craft a lot of this because she knows you really, really well, but you've been a valuable ally to the Castro Valley Unified School District and other school districts in Alameda County by seeking input on legislation impacting public school, and you've been a lifelong advocate and involved citizen in Hayward and was obviously elected to the City Council in 2004. Dr. Quirk took an active role in the community demonstrated by service with the Hayward Rotary, the Friends of the Library, the Hayward Library Commission, the Board of Communication Workers of America, Local 9119, and the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, and you have always advocated for public education, listening to local educators, asking for input on what's needed to support students, and being a strong advocate for adequate and stable funding for schools, just to name a few things. I don't know how you did all of that, but thank you so much for your service.
Board President, you should come up here. Well, this means a lot to me. From the time I was on Hayward City Council, I remember running on the position, on the slogan, "Bill Listens," which many of you know Bonnie Moss, and she was my campaign consultant and said, "Bill listens." That's, that's the most important thing, and when you do listen, then it leads to action. And I, it just means so much to be recognized by the school board. It really does. And of course, lots of good friends on the school board here, and I've always said, "This is the toughest elected job." It's not for people who have thin skins. You can't tell a first grade parent that you have a two-year plan to correct the first grade. It just, and it's extremely emotional, and then there's negotiations with your unions, particularly with the teachers, which are always fraught, and it's just the nature of the beast. And frankly, the teachers' union is, I'd say, the most powerful union in the state, so it's, it's just a very difficult job. And of course, we all, we all want to do our best. We all want to make the schools great. We all want to give the teachers everything they want, but sometimes you just can't, and it's just not an easy job. I do want to say, Board President Theodore, thank you for your service for the last eight years, your positive leadership and service throughout the years has been an invaluable asset. The Castro Valley School District, its students, and Castro Valley community, and best wishes for whatever comes next. Again, to have so many of my friends awarding this to me, and you have a great superintendent. You made a wonderful choice. So, and I will say that it's, it's been a real pleasure the last few years, when the budgets have been good, to be able to get the money out to the schools, and then Harveen and others are always telling me, "Well, there's this condition that needs to change, and that one," and I do what I can on that. But it's been a great 10 years in the Assembly, eight years on the City Council. I'm not going to run again for anything, but I'll probably be on a state commission of some type or another, and I'm also going to be a senior fellow at UC Berkeley and a policy fellow at Stanford, where I plan to work with people there, faculty, students, post-ocs, who will try and come up with policies to make the state better and help them through the politics of all that. And it helps that I have a PhD in astrophysics. So, thank you all very much, and I really means a lot because I have so many friends on this board. So, thank you all. Oh, and I also need to thank Joe. The two of us started life together in PTA, and Joe, you were state president at one point, in addition to being on the school board, and another person who dedicated so much to this community as did Dot Theodore and others. So, thank you, Joe.
Dr. Quirk, we have some comments from board members, and we'll start with Vice President Whitaker.
So, Dr. Quirk, I mean this in the nicest way, but you're, you never seemed like a politician to me. It was like, "Oh, this guy knows science. This is awesome." And every time that I've met you, you're so real, and it's so refreshing, like being able to talk to you about what's going on. It just, I know that you had our back. I know that you had everyone's back. You cared about what happened to people. You cared about what happened in our community, and it shows by the legislation that you passed and that you fought for. So, thank you for your tremendous amount of service to our community. It's, it's affected us greatly, and you're completely humble and real, and just really appreciate everything that you've done. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Dr. Quirk, for all of your times that I've, I've gone to you and asked you questions about things, and you gave answers, and, you know, sometimes maybe they were even silly questions at the time, but you didn't treat them that way. Thank you very much, and I want to thank you for all your support that you've done for the community in Castro Valley and here, and helping our schools as well for funding and other items. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for everything you've done, but you're not going away. You know, you're still going to be around, so don't think that you're not going to hear from us in the future, continuing to seek some guidance. So, we greatly appreciate everything you've done and everything you will do. Thanks.
I think the legislature should make you the astrophysicist emeritus. I think that's still pretty amazing to have science-informed legislation, and as someone who works in science policy, I appreciate that greatly. I'm going to reflect on one of the events we did when we were kicking off Measure G over at Proctor Elementary School. We were still trying to pay off the campaign debt, and we came up with all these gimmicks to do it, and we did this wonderful kickoff event at Proctor, and I don't know if you remember saying this, but you, you made a note that, you know, "We should have just bought a house in Castro Valley and had our kids go to Castro Valley Schools," and that your commitment to our schools has always been very obvious, particularly as I've transitioned onto the board and seeing how you've worked with, with the board and both with our staff and the superintendent. On a personal note, I am tremendously grateful to you. Jumping into public service is terrifying. You saw a spark in me, and your engagement with me as a mentor and as a friend has meant a whole lot to me in guiding me and in being a part of the Democratic Party in particular. So, I want to thank you for that and supporting young activists throughout this county and throughout the state, whether they agree with you. And I love disagreeing with Bill Quirk because it's fun. It's a good conversation, and you've been a fantastic legislator, and thank you. Thank you.
And I want to echo everyone's gratitude for your service. What an incredible journey you have forged, and all of the things that you've done for public education, especially listening to advocates when we knocked on your door in Sacramento and in Hayward, and always being pleasant in listening to demands and explaining the process. So, thank you very much for the time that you've committed. Right. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agreement between Hayward Area Recreation and Park District.
Yeah, this is a very exciting item. I see that one of our, our hard board members, trustees, Peter Rosen, Mr. Rosen is sitting in the back, and, you know, there's just a lot to say about this agreement. I can tell you that we've worked together collaboratively with our ad hoc. I want to thank trustee Howard, trustee Whitaker as, as well for all of the work, all of the, just the collaborative conversations that took, that brought us to this place where we are now, you are considering the agreement between HARD and CVUSD to build to actually redo the fields, the soccer fields at Canyon, four soccer fields with an overlay of a softball and baseball, lighted fields, parking lot, snack shack, or whatever we call it, concession stands, and, and all of that. So, it's really, really exciting, and I'm happy to just bring it to you tonight. Ms. Chan is on the phone if we have any questions, also Mr. Trayber. So, it's, that's the item on the agenda.
I would like to move approval. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Mike?
It's just for the edification of those here. I'm just wondering if we could get like a quick timeline, how I know that the state architect, superintendent architect is involved, and then I do have a comment as well.
Yeah. So, first of all, let me just say that included in the agreement, and we're going to, tomorrow, we actually will take a couple of photos and do a press release, but we are receiving the support from HARD with $10 million added to the about $5 million that we put in, and I love, and the agreement is very detailed about how we're going to work together, really detailed, you guys, really detailed, how we're going to work together and make sure that, that things get done, you know, just the way we have expected it and we have planned. So, once it's approved, the process starts, and it does have to go to DSA, which is the Department of State Architect, and it probably sometimes takes between six months or so, and then once that start, that's done, then we actually start construction and so forth. But if, Suzy, if you have anything else to add, that would be fine, but I don't, if you have any questions, other questions?
Thank you for providing that.
Does she, if she doesn't have any, yeah, I don't, yeah, I responded.
Yeah. I just, I'm grateful that this is here, and I just want to acknowledge the work of the previous board, Monica Lee, and also Joe Loss, who has left the building, for their hard work. I know this was, I know this was tough, and thank you to Lavender and Gary for your continued work on this. I am just really grateful. It's, California is really set up uniquely in some ways where we have these distinct government districts, right? And so, we're compelled to find ways of working together for the common good of our community, and I think this is a really good down payment for increased, you know, better relationships with HARD, building something for our community, and hopefully it can, it should be a pathway to other engagements with other government agencies and other, sparks, maybe our imagination for what we can do. So, I just, I'm grateful to HARD's willingness to work with us and the persistence of both boards to work together. So, thanks, and staff, thank you. I know having to deal with revisions and negotiations has taken a lot of time, but it's important, and thank you for, while supporting our interests, fighting for the interest of Castro Valley.
Thanks, Mike. Lavender?
I just want to say, you know, I've sat on this ad hoc committee with trustee Howard, and I want to send a huge thanks to the HARD board and the HARD staff, including our staff. The collaborative effort that we've made together for the benefit of our community is huge. We work together figuring out what's best for our community, and this collaboration, I believe, is, you know, a continued great relationship with HARD, and I just want to thank them for working with us and for helping us make this come to fruition. So, you know, Peter, if you could share that with the rest of the board, we just, we're really looking forward, and we'll see them tomorrow, to this collaborative effort. And our community, I mean, we're going to have turf, soccer field, softball fields, baseball fields. It's going to be a destination for people to come to our community and help build community here within Castro Valley, and the bond measure money that HARD pass is going back into our community, and we're all working together for the betterment of our community. So, thank you, and thank you to our staff for all their hard efforts and work to make this happen.
No pun intended. So, I actually messed up. We have a public comment for this item, so I should have asked for that public comment before we all started commenting. Sorry about that, Peter. Come on back up.
Well, thank you. A lot of what I was going to say has already been said. I'm, I think I'm going to go a different direction. I'm going to point out, I think I came here six or seven years ago, when, in this room, long before I was on the board, and before some of you were on the board, and the discussion at the time when it was, it was, it seemed like, "Oh, it's pretty straightforward. Let's talk about the types of astroturf," is what we were talking about. It was one of those things, and it was right after I had come to a meeting urging the district to not put astroturf down in the, in the kindergarten fields, and it was funny because I could recognize how important it was to have astroturf on the soccer fields because you're not going to have gopher holes, the volume and the need of the people that are going to use it, and that brings to mind this, this is going to be a huge asset to the community. It goes beyond HARD's needs and the school district's needs. It's the entire community, whether it's this, this local soccer leagues, whether it's the little leagues, whether it's softball leagues, in addition to the after-school sports. We just heard about how successful the tennis team did. Imagine what's going to happen with the opportunities here. For years, Castro Valley's had an excellent cross-country team because we've had the opportunities with some great cross-country options, and, and I think it's going to do really well with that. I want to thank the team, and this is a huge collaboration. I hope it sets the stage for other things. I mean, this is one of these things where the community wins by successful partnerships with us. It benefits all of us, and I want to thank the lawyers. I can't believe I'm saying this.
I know.
Because there was so much back and forth, and so many, you know, we were joking about protecting our attorney, Kurt was, you know, Curtis Kidder was, his goal is to protect us, and then your attorneys to protect that, protect the district's assets, but in reality, what's ended up, you know, iron and iron sharpen steel. I mean, the idea is, this is a, is a very strong agreement, and it's, I think it's going to work out really well for the community, and I want to thank all of you for making this happen, and I look forward to being there tomorrow, and this is a great thing for the community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure to say, this, just like you said, this is really good for the community. This is what happens when you collaborate. But I do want to give a shout out to Jim Wheeler, who is the general manager at HARD, who I have worked with very closely the last few years. who I have worked with very closely the last few years, and I can't thank him enough. And as well as the HARD board and our attorney, Jim Traver, who is online. It is a lot of work. It's when you have a legal document like this, you really need, it's not like our expertise. So we do need our attorneys to actually work on, on that document to make sure everything is great. I do want to thank Sharon True, Quince, and Suzy Chan, especially because they really worked so hard behind the scene to make all this happen. So thank you again.
Gary, and then Dolly, and then Quentin.
Yeah, I'll be brief here because everybody said a lot of things already. But I think it's great that even though it took a while to do it, we have two really good agreements that enable us to work together for the benefit of the community. I think that's fabulous. But I think the most exciting thing is that we got two agreements, how many more can we work out? You know, there, there are gotta be a lot of other places where we can work together out there. And I think that's a really exciting aspect, and I look forward to doing that. So thanks for this one, for number two, thanks for number one. And I look forward to three and four and five and so forth, so. Thanks, Peter, since you're here.
Since we took this set of sequences, is there any way I could take back my second so someone else could do it?
No.
Okay, all right. I just want to thank really Gary and thank Lavender for being on the board, representing us and spending their time on this contract. And thank the HARD board, the staff at HARD and our staff as well, thank you.
All right, Quentin.
Just want to take a second to highlight how much the students are really going to benefit from this. I remember, oh, it must have been, since I was nine years old, I was playing soccer on that canyon field. And having to worry about stepping in a gopher hole is never fun, you know, especially when you're just a nine year old kid trying to have fun. And to highlight what you said, Peter, about the potential success of our team. I had the pleasure of being on that canyon team, and I just want to say we made it to the championships both seasons I was on there. And we'll see, we'll see what else we can do. So thank you so much for all the work. The community and the students at Canyon are really going to benefit from this. And I'm so excited, I wish, I wish this would have happened while I was playing. But it's so great that the future generations will, will be able to benefit from this. So thank you to all parties involved and all the work you put in.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker.
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the agreement has been approved 5-0. Thank you, okay, moving on to the next item, equitable grading practices.
Awesome, so if there's a theme for tonight that we've been seeing so far, I think it's leadership. Dot, first of all, thank you for all the leadership you've shown and advocacy over the time I've been here. I really have been in awe at your courage and the way that you've approached teaching and learning as a social justice endeavor. So thank you for that. But also, you know, other board members, there, we have amazing site leaders. We have amazing teacher leaders and student leaders as well. And so it's a part of this presentation, actually, it's, it's really, I think, telling when we look at something like equitable grading, involvement of everyone, all of the different types of leadership that we have in our community. So equitable, the work on equitable grading actually started Castro Valley High School, where there were some teachers that were interested in doing more to, to create a system for grading that really lifted up students, especially the students who might need some more growth. We wanted to be able to reward learning rather than penalize learning. And it really rests on three central pillars, that being making sure that grading is accurate, that it's bias resistant, and that it's motivational for students. And so just to start with, here's a quote from Joe Feldman that we think speaks to the heart of some of this work. And making sure that students are successful, just as our strategic directions say, all students have opportunities to succeed. So the way we grade should increase the students' confidence so that each student feels that they're equally eligible for academic success, regardless of circumstances or educational background. This is in line when we talk about our strategic directions with the way that we interpret that in terms of what, how that translates into the work, right? So the three areas of focus that we've had is in Educational Services Department over the years have been equity, the why of what, of our work, multi-tiered systems of support, which includes RTI and PBIS, which is the what we do to make sure that we're ensuring equity and building site capacity. And you'll see with equitable grading practices, these components are part and parcel of that work as well. It's also connected to a variety of different initiatives and other work that's happening district wide. I won't read and go through each item, but I think we're familiar with a lot of the work that we're doing around anti-bias, anti-racism, MTSS, deepening our work, et cetera. And so today we have an amazing group that's going to be presenting. I'm going to, we're going to start with Ms. Neer Rashishi, our director of, of elementary, who has done an amazing job helping lead this work. But we also have with us our director of secondary, David Luongo. We have our principals, two, two principals here, Mr. Patrick Hansen Schmidt, Afy Sput, and Trent Logan, who really has been one of the teacher leaders that has held up the mantle and helped to push our entire district in this direction. And as well, he's brought with him three amazing student leaders who are really, that's the heart of this work and why we do this work. So without further ado, I'll pass to Neer Rashishi.
Thank you, Dr. Ryman. So really, when we talk about equitable grading practices or standards based grading, we're really thinking about the impact that grades have on the life trajectories of our students. If you think about it, just looking at that list up there, grades actually allow us to participate in programs or not participate in programs. And programs like sports, dances, can we get a job or not get a job? Parent opinion about the way that, you know, the different grades that we get. Good or bad? Student self-worth, how do I think about myself when I get, when I receive these grades every quarter, every semester, every semester? And then college opportunities, can I get in? Or are the doors closed depending on the grades that I get? And of course, the all-important dances, we all want to make sure we can go to those dances. But sometimes grades can prevent us from going to dances if they're not where they, where we deem they should be. So the life trajectories, the choices that our students have or don't have really can be impacted by the grades we give. And then we can even talk about more things that are on this list. I'm sure everybody in the audience and up on the dais can think about the other things that really get impacted by grades. Think about life insurance, car insurance rates, how we, you know, the, the cultural wealth of our families and the judgments that can be made based on the grades that our students get. So there's lots of different ways that grades impact, both from a positive perspective and can be negative perspective. So we really take that to heart when we're thinking about grading in Castro Valley. And so as Dr. Ryman said, the three pillars, we really want our grades to be accurate, bias resistant, and motivational. And I want, we've seen this, these three pillars over and over again. We've made several different presentations with the board, but just kind of bringing everybody up to speed. And some of the practices that are at our elementary schools are kind of across the board. And we talked with our elementary principals, and we have two of these marvelous principals here tonight. But we, we said, you know, what are the practices that we're really kind of using across our elementary schools? And so redos, retakes, use of more recent performance. Like if you take the exam one time and they actually have another opportunity to like, if it didn't go quite right this time, you know, what do you need to do to prepare? And actually, you have another opportunity to take it and replace that score that you probably didn't do so well on that first time. And then use of rubrics, and then a four-point scale that's, that we're working on as part of our new pilot report card that we'll use in the, fully in the 23, 24 school year. So enough from me. It's really important for you to hear how it's working on the ground, those practices. And so I'm going to invite two of our marvelous elementary principals up. And I think we're starting with Mr. Pat Hansen Smith.
Hello, hello, nice to see you. So as Nea was saying, Afy and I are here to shed a little bit of light onto the specific things that we're doing on the elementary school campuses. And so we're going to talk specifically about Independent and Castro Valley, what we're doing on our two sites. You can see on these slides, we've got it organized into those three pillars that Nea was talking about. Some of the things you see in here, Nea's already talked about, we've got the redos and retakes. But when we're talking about elementary school kids, it's not just enough to say you can redo this, you can retake this. We really have to guide them through that process. So part of that is reviewing the assessments or the quizzes that we give to the students with them and reteaching the concepts that they've missed. And then it may seem like a simple little thing, but this is very difficult for some people, demonstrating that we, all of us make mistakes. And then showing them the process of how to go about correcting those mistakes when we do make them. And if you think about that, all of those things, that is exactly what our entire MTSS process is about. It's, you have these chances to redo, we're going to reteach if you don't get the concepts. And we're focusing specifically on those essential standards that we're teaching the kids. And then when we talk about accuracy, one of the key things that we're doing is it's the most recent performance, the most recent assessment, the most recent quiz that we give our kids, that's the one that counts. We're not averaging things together. We take the, the, when the kids show us that they've mastered the concept, we believe them. And Nea mentioned rubrics. We're focusing on building those rubrics, not just like on the, on the report card, but throughout all of the content that we're doing, rubrics for how we're grading kids on their reading. When they're reading to us, what does it look like to master those essential standards and so forth? And then we're really thinking about the purpose of the different activities that we do in school and outside of school. For example, homework, for the most part, is meant for practice or preparation for class. And so homework doesn't go into the grade. It's meant to teach the kids, and then we use the assessments to figure out whether or not they mastered it. And I'm going to turn it over to Afy to talk about the last pillar.
So for, to address the, the bias resistant pillar, both Castro Valley Elementary and Independent have Equity Task Force on our sites. And they really guide our work and lead the focus for the year. So at C V E, this school year, we're all, all of the certificateed staff is doing a book study on cultivating genius, which actually was done a couple of years ago with district-wide Equity Task Force. At Independent, the task force there is responsible for finding articles that address implicit biases and institutional biases and discrimination, and they lead group discussions on it. And finally, at our last professional development day, all of the elementary staff were taught or discussed about our R I R skills, recognize, interrupt, and repair skills. And so we're spending time practicing scenarios and how we would deal with those. So how have we implemented things? In the summer of 2021, the district ed services offered online training with Joe Feldman and grading for equity. Any teacher who wanted that book could get that book, any classified staff, any staff member who wanted that book could get that book. In 2122, I said, okay, the lowest, what's the easiest thing to implement? The thing that we can do this year and talk about, but that won't put a lot of extra pressure on teachers. And redos and retakes was the, the one that we decided. It wasn't as easy as just saying, okay, we're going to start redos and retakes. Because there had to be a lot of conversation, and I'm sure you encountered this too, about what, when do we let that happen? Grade, so grade level teams had to discuss and come up with common agreements about when they would let that hap- when would, what would, could anyone do a retake? What did we need to do to get students prepared for the retake? And then that led to a bigger conversation is, oh, we need tier-two structures for math, not just reading. Because if we expect students to become more successful, we have to have structures to reteach these students and skills that they're not mastering. And then this year, we, we got kind of lofty. We decided as, as a whole school, that we were going to create four-point writing rubrics for each of the genres of writing. And so teachers' grade levels got release days that I was lucky enough to fund through Title I funding, where they worked on writing, student-facing and teacher-facing rubrics that were four points for the opinion writing, narrative writing, and informational writing. And now we're in the process of trying them and calibrating them and working together with teammates to score and see, are these good, or how much do we need to revise them? The other really important thing that we did this school year was to reestablish commitments within our collaborative teams. Because a lot of the work that we're doing takes a level of trust and being able to have conversations with each other that are honest and real. And so we started the year, and this was actually Nea's, one of Nea's input about where we should build with our teams to really say, what are our expectations of each other? And that has made it so that we can have these conversations.
So there's a lot of parallels between what C V E and N D is doing in terms of equity grading and really everything else. So what I want to do is point out the differences in how Independent went about it versus how C V E went about it. So same trainings were offered, same books, same readings and all that, all that kind of stuff. After that was done, I gave my staff a little summary of all of the equitable grading principles with examples of what those can look like. And then within their PLCs, the, our instructional leadership team led conversations with their grade levels about, like reflections on their practices. Which of these are they currently doing, which of these are they not currently doing? And they chose a specific practice that they were going to start to implement within their specific grade level. Ironically, it ended up becoming pretty much what Afy's doing at C V E. My older grades, third, fourth, and fifth grade are focusing on redos and retakes. And then my younger grades, kindergarten, first and second grade, for the most part, are focusing on creating four-point rubrics for different content areas. Kindergarten is focusing on reading, and first grade is focusing on writing. And second grade, I believe, is focusing on, on writing as well. And then another bit about that, I'm really leaning on my, my teacher leaders, my instructional leadership team to do a lot of this work in our PLC meetings. And so a lot of the accountability is coming from that I L T, having those reflections and conversations with their grade levels. But then it's also coming with specific PLC rubrics. We're getting, creating rubrics for the kids, we use rubrics as well, that really look at the process and how we're working together and the product that we're creating. So that's a little look into the elementary schools. I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to our wonderful Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening, everybody. So focusing on the bias piece and trying to remove bias from the grading process, one of the main strategies is for teachers to focus the grading on the content knowledge of students and try to remove some of the other elements that allow for flexibility and discretion that aren't specific to a student's academic skills. So that was the revisiting that piece. So at the secondary level, we are doing similarly, the majority of our secondary staff went through the Joe Feldman training for grading for equity. We are in year two of our pilot that Trent is leading, and we're looking forward to hearing from him in just a few moments. And in addition to the pilot program that's taking place, we also have a number of individual teachers at both the middle school and the high school level that are participating in exploring these practices and trying to figure out how to weave them into their classes as well. And we're working on developing the capacity of our leaders, our principals, and our assistant principals to help support this work so that the sites can grow and continue to, to do better in this area. So some key strategies that the secondary folks have been looking at and implementing. Accurate grading, so evenly distributing the grades within a grade scale. So the traditional system that most of us went through with grading was a zero to 100 scale. And on that scale, zero to 59 was the F. So that was skewed significantly towards the F score and not proportionate as you spread it out. So there are a couple of different ways and strategies now to evenly distribute that within a grading system. One example would be your one to four grading system, which we're going to talk a little bit about. In other words, like a one would be an F, and a four would be an A. And then the grade is distributed evenly throughout the, the one to four process. So that's one of the elements that's taking place. Retakes and redos are growing significantly in the secondary schools. It is, as was mentioned earlier, challenging to figure out how to do that realistically and how to prioritize which assignments to allow for retakes and redos. But we do appreciate that folks are exploring how to do that, to incorporate it not only into the school day, but also allow for things after school for the retakes and redos. Another layer of this is trying to figure out the appropriate percentage to weigh homework and participation and some of the non-academic measures that come with traditionally what goes into a student's grade. So when you look at the Feldman work, there are a lot of recommendations to not assign credit to those areas, but we recognize that that's a big shift from the model that we have in place. And so bringing people into the mix and having conversations with all of our stakeholders, including our students to get feedback around, what are the things that we value within our grading system and how can we realistically set up a grading system with the three pillars in mind to support our students and teachers and community? So here's an example of a report that if a student were to log into their Aries account, they can see their courses and how they're doing the courses. I've removed some of the other elements that are confidential, but this is basically what they would see. So this is an example of someone who has teachers that are doing both the traditional 100% scale. Whether or not that teacher's using standards based grading or equitable grading, you can't tell from looking at this. But what you can tell is that there are teachers that are using zero to four scale. So for example, that first line item, the symphony orchestra, A plus 100%, we're all familiar seeing that. The second line though is new for many folks in our community. So the AP bio, a B and a 3.3. So your B is equating to, the 3.3 equates to a B. This is new information for our students, our staff and our parents to understand and to try to translate into how does this work within our grading system. So Trent will be able to speak to that a little bit. The students can speak a little bit about how this is working for them and how, how it feels to be in this new grading system. And so with that, I want to introduce Mr. Logan and he'll introduce the students as they speak. So thank you all for being here too.
Hello. I think this is the second time I've been here and talked to you all. So it's kind of fun. I won't repeat too much of what I've said before, but just I want to reemphasize how great it is as a teacher, being able to really trust that the grade a student receives is the grade that they've earned. I feel like when I end semesters now, I never look and like do the gut check that Feldman talks about of like, is that right? It's like, no, I know it's right because I've checked many times and I trust it. And that's really wonderful. And it's also been great this year and the second year where I've fully implemented this sort of teaching policy. It's like I can push students twice as hard and their mental health is much, much better than even before because of the retakes and the reassessment policy. I can push them in ways that I think is actually borderline unreasonable. And no one complains. It's kind of funny because I'm trying to see at what point students will start complaining and they haven't complained yet. Because they know they can fix it. And really that's what it comes down to is like, I'm pushing you hard. I have high expectations for you. But you have unlimited tries to try to improve and meet that goal. And I think that's really great. I think it's definitely doing a better job of preparing students for life after high school, preparing students for classes that'll come later. While also preserving their mental health, because I feel like those two narratives are really true right now, that students' mental health needs to be taken serious and, and helped, but also we need to push our students harder. So how do you do that? I think it's this way. And so from a teaching perspective, speaking for the pilot group, we're all in agreement that we have not quite figured it out yet. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of prototyping is the word I like. That's going into teaching this way. It's required a paradigm shift where we have to throw away everything we've known about teaching, both as a teacher and also as a student when we were going to school. But we are all in agreement, none of us can imagine going back. It's like pretty much universal, like yeah, this is better. We just got to figure out the better way to do it. And so it's, it's been great. It's been really wonderful. People are slowly coming on board. The core group of us, there's like 15 to 20 of us who are really devoted. We all feel really good about the policies we're doing and we've been meeting in person this year. Previously it was all online, which isn't great. And the in-person meetings have been much more like productive, which is great. So I feel really good about the direction we're going and I'm feeling like we've sort of figured it out to where next year, if new teachers want to try this, I can be like, here are rubrics. Here is the policies. Here's what a syllabus looks like. Here's the email you send to parents, like all of these steps that are necessary in order to teach this way. We've kind of like figured it out. And what's great is there's so much both horizontal and vertical alignment, no matter what you teach, there's a lot of similarities. So what I create is much more than normal transferable to other curriculum, like to science class or math class. And so that's been really great. And I won't talk too much about the student perspective because I have three students. So if you want to come up with like, going first is easier because you get to say this stuff, but then they have to figure it out afterward. So this is Maggie. Maggie's going to talk.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I have a few opinions on standard based grading. I believe standards based grading should be implemented into our school system. Also a lot with our mental health, especially the retakes, because it puts less pressure on students to study and like pull all nighters and stuff while trying to balance out like their social life or their mental health or like a job if they're low income. But I think standards based grading should be implemented properly to see like good results. Like last year, I had a teacher who said she did standards based grading, but she didn't allow retakes, which put a lot of pressure on students because that class was especially hard. And it ruined a lot of mental, like the mental health of a lot of students. So I believe if we implement standard based grading, I think it should be done properly and it should fit all criteria of what standards based grading is.
This is Drew.
Hi, everybody. My name's Drew. I just wanted to speak about my personal experience so far in Mr. Logan's class and also in some of my other teachers who've implemented or tried to implement standard based grading. I think overall it's been like a really positive thing for me because personally I have like a lot of stuff, like after school, I have a job I have to do. I have family members that I need to take care of and just knowing that like one assignment that I can't get to isn't going to heavily impact my grade or it's just a really, it's a big relief for me and for my mental health. And I think that being able to retake tests and knowing that my grade is represented based on what I do in that class and what I actually learn, like the entire thing, rather than just like at a specific set time and like taking that test and failing it at that moment. Knowing that I can go back and redo it is just really gratifying for me and my family and my situation. So, yeah.
And then this is Evan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Evan. Speaking from my personal experience, my classes are about 50 50 split between which are standards based and which are traditional. And I found that my hardest classes, which are standards based grading, I found myself devoting more time and more effort and having less stress in those very difficult classes where in my more traditional classes, the workload is much lighter, but I feel myself constricted to a schedule which can very much mess up my grade. For example, sometimes you will have multiple homework assignments due in one night where you have something bad going on that day and it all falls on one day, which can be very, very stressful. Where that doesn't happen in standards based grading, because you can take a minute for yourself, you can relax, you can deal with what is happening in your own life and then deal with it later when you're more equipped to handle with your academics, which I feel is very important. And yeah, the only downside I've encountered personally with standards based grading is a situation in which a teacher is not fully implement the ideas of standards based grading, specifically taking out the safety net of the percentage of your grade from homework and other things like that, and not putting in the safety net of reassessments, which can just cause a lot more stress. So it's basically, that's just the most important part, I feel.
Big thank you to Mr. Logan and the students from Castro Valley High School. So a key right now is meeting folks where they're at. And this, this is a process and a cycle and we recognize that. And so as we continue through this cycle, we're assessing the situation, meeting the staff at the different sites where they are with the process and growing and providing professional development opportunities. And then taking the time to celebrate the small wins. It's important in this process. So with that, we've got some next steps TK through 12 that we're, we're trying to plan for and be mindful of. And so as I mentioned, building capacity. We're also trying to learn from surrounding schools and school districts that are engaging in this work on a similar timeline with us, many of them. And just taking that opportunity to grow collectively. We want to make sure we're being intentional about communicating with our stakeholders, particularly our parents and families so that they understand what we're doing and we're able to take feedback so that we can make sure this supports the community as it continues to grow and roll out. And then ultimately, at some point, we'd like to see us update a board policy that is more equitable when it comes to our grading practices. So with that opportunity for some questions, comments for anyone in the group, I'm happy to hang out here.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We have Gary and then Dolly and then Mike and then Quentin.
I have a comment and a question, but the first one is, I mean, it's a thing that I've said several times before, since I started hearing about this kind of grading and everything. And that is, you know, we, we wonder for a long time about what, what can we do to improve the learning environment here in the district? And this just strikes me as just, I mean, I don't even know what word to put on it, revolutionary. It's just a change from just a ho-hum system that we used for 100 years. You know, I'm a product of it, for better or worse. But I mean, this is really a way to make everything better. I mean, it's just, we should, it's like the distillation of learning and teaching. It's just pretty, so I think it's just a fantastic thing to do. So and also the fact that you can let students move somewhat if they're unpaced rather than having them, whoops, in little groups of 30 or 35 moving through like we've done since Ben Franklin was around. I think, but my question is, you know, and you sort of alluded to it, the next steps, where's the timeline or what do you think? I mean, clearly there's a lot of moving parts here. Everybody has to be brought on board with this, not just teachers, but students and, and parents who aren't going to understand why their homework, kids' homework doesn't count anymore because it used to. What do you think? What's your guess? Any of you? I don't know who to ask this of. Jason, Nia, any of you?
Well, I'll start with the timeline for secondary is really building the capacity piece. I'd say elementary is in a different, it's different in terms of how the grading works, elementary to secondary. So as elementary continues, continues to build their capacity and it's growing significantly there, it's going to have an automatic passage with middle into high school and folks will be familiar with it. So at the secondary level, the key is really building the capacity of the folks that are interested and engaged and, and want to explore it. And then we're, we're approaching, you know, when do we get to that tipping point to really be able to get the majority of a staff? Because it does have to be approached differently in different classes. So knowing that in elementary, it's a little bit more consistent within grade level or as you're moving through. But in the high school, for example, you've got so many different departments and so much going on. So trying to build the capacity, whether it's within departments that are really engaged in the work and by doing the pilot work, I think that's the way to grow it out, saying that at the end of this year, everybody's like, that would be an unrealistic. And in order for it to work, grading traditionally has really been owned by teachers. And so this is a huge shift to where we're asking teachers to change and reflect on a practice that's been, as you alluded to, going on for a long time. So we want it to be a collaborative process and there are some growing pains with it. So we want to make sure we do that in a way that's collaborative and intentional and supportive. Nia, do you want to add anything to elementary?
I don't think it's elementary specifically. I think it's kind of in, in general, time. Folks need time, patience and perseverance of just developing the capacity to do the work, to understand the work and to build not only folks that have been doing it because they're learning. I would think that Trent would say, we've been learning every time we try one of these practices. And so would the principals and probably the students along the way. But I think that anytime we're bringing new folks on board, it's kind of like restart. Make sure people understand the basics and then people, give people, have the safe environment to actually try the practices. And, and, and not have, you know, if something goes wrong, which it will, it definitely will. You know, just to have the safe space to actually do that. And so I think that leads us to the other, the only other thing I can think about is really communication with our stakeholders, with our, our parents, our caregivers and making sure they understand what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it. And that over time, we're going to get better and better at it, but it's going to take some time. Some of us will be more savvy than others. And then, you know, as we bring new folks on board, we'll also have new folks that come ready. And that already practiced from other school districts. So just that, you know, patience, time and perseverance over and over again, working on it.
Yeah. So I'm going to just say a few things. I think anyone who reads Joe Feldman's book, you just can't deny that the way we have graded is inaccurate. It's just a fact, right? So it's like you've heard, it's getting people on board to the point where is it logical to continue to do the same thing? Or are we going to actually make that leap to where we need to be? But something you heard from the students and also from presenters tonight, is there some basic things that just need, they're like first, right? Like redo and retake. It's a no brainer. Redos and retakes are no brainers. So, but it's different in different grades. I'm, what I'm hearing is, for example, at the high school, the math department, almost everybody is already doing that, right? So it's getting everybody else on board to see the value and the reason to do this. So if, if we're really looking at timeline and one of the things that Mr. Loanggo had on that list was board policy. I think it is important to get to the board policy. And the board policy doesn't have to list everything, but I think there are like three or four things that if we can get everybody to agree on, retakes and re-dos. I do want to say, or maybe I'll say it later, but I know Quentin was in a meeting. We have about 23 students that we meet with. Our district student leadership alliance and Ms. Eagles did a beautiful activity with them. So we talked about, and almost everybody in that room said the majority of their teachers actually do redo is in retakes, which is really exciting. So, but they also kind of talked about some other things that if it was like two or three other things, what would they be? So maybe I'll say that later, but I'll leave, I'll leave it at that. I think we have to get to a place where we actually have this in our board policy. But when, I think it depends on how we can get everybody moving in that direction.
Dolly and then Mike.
As you all know, I come from the continuation school and from the continuation school, we were always looking at ways, how could we do a better job to make our students more successful? And we did have like, not this type of grading change, but we had had a grading change some years ago that made it so that, I'm not saying that we should do this here, but that made it so that kids who got 50% didn't get a zero number of credits. They got partial credits. Okay. And that was a way to try to make things more equitable. And also to give, the other thing was like this does, to give kids an opportunity that even if it's at the very end of a semester, the end of a grading period, a motivation to try to do better to learn the material. If you have 50% and you're going to, you can only get up to 55, no matter what, there's no motivation to do better to learn the material. So this kind of like equitable grading system, which I'm all on board for by retakes and re-dos and, and really helps with a lot of that motivation, which I really love to see. So I'm all on board for this. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, Dolly, Mike and then Quentin.
I have a few comments and some questions, but first I want to thank our, our students for being here tonight and sharing your experiences. One thing that concerns me is how sustainable is it for us to have two systems going on at the same time, right? So in my mind, I'm like, there's a sense of urgency for us to think about a board policy because ironically, that's kind of inequitable, right? If we have different standards going on. Two things that come to my mind is sort of the radicalism of incrementalism, if that makes any sense here. But I, we've been having, the Kuziaks have been having a lot of conversations at home about re-dos and, and retakes. And I've got to say, we have some strong opinions about, about equitable grading over at Creekside. And I appreciate the dialogue I'm having with my kids about it. Which leads me to my first question is, what, what I like about the idea of re-dos and retakes is it actually puts control into the students. And I would love to hear from the students, maybe if you have any thoughts on this. There's a certain amount of free will here. There's a certain amount of free will here, right? Like, you've got to decide if you're going to do it. So what's the culture like between teachers and students? Kind of like, hey, I got an assessment here, you can retake. Are you encouraged? Is it sort of like, oh, you kind of decide on your own time? I mean, how does that work?
My experience with reassessments, it's mostly been you kind of just decide when it works for the student, whether it be at lunch or after school. In my experience, teachers have always been very accommodating. Teachers who care about reassessments, it's usually not that big of a problem. It seems to, it seems to work out pretty well.
But if there's an, is, do you see that there's other students who might not feel empowered to say, I do need to do a retake? Like, how how do you sort of build the culture, like, I'm going to do this? Or do you see, do you classmates who maybe aren't taking advantage of it?
I more so feel, I really feel that that culture exists already within at least my friend group. I see a lot of kids really motivated to fix their grade if they have the opportunity to, and they will find that way, fix that grade.
Excellent. This is not a question for you, but if you want to respond to it, you can. I I do, there's so many things. Oh, and and in some ways, it's very triggering when I think about these things. There's so many things that are out of the control for a kid in their life. And so I just, as a as a philosophy, I really dig this, right? That we are acknowledging that there are things that happen in a kid's life that impacts their ability, whether it's doing that homework, ensuring that we're removing, not taking points away for things that, you know, might be behavioral, for example. I I think that I applaud the district for going in that direction. I am interested to know about what what our grades mean and I, you know, for me, when I first was brought in on the board, I I was reading the Feldman book and it was so wonderful to hear the engagement. And the conversation's really matured in the past two years. So I'm just, I'm just so impressed where we've gone. When we talk about the actual grades, will we still be talking about A, B, C's and D's, for example? And how, because I think sometimes when people hear this, they don't, sorry, thank you, they don't necessarily, they don't understand like, how do traditional, the traditional A, B, C's and D's play into that?
Yeah. For the meantime, unless colleges change their application process, yes, there will be As through Fs.
As through Fs.
And I think it's important to continue that because some parents will look at a 3.2 and be like, what does that mean? But they recognize an A minus when they see it. And so we'll continue to keep the letter grades. I think that's the consistency that is very clear. There's some debate about where do you cut off the difference between an A and a B? Where you're breaking down the four point scale. We've tried many different versions and we've settled on one we like, I think, the most now, where at a point where we're kind of in agreement. Which is, but yes, there will also be letter grades.
Two questions, sorry, and I'll be done. Is there a role for like narrative feedback and how does that play into it? I'm thinking of UC Santa Cruz that used to not give grades, right? And what's the role of that type of feedback?
Yeah, so narrative feedback is great. It it depends on specifically what you mean by narrative feedbacks. That can mean a lot of different things. So when it comes to the specific assignments, we have very clear criteria of like, this is what I'm grading you on. Here's the score you got. In addition to that, you, I mean, I try to give verbal feedback to a lot of students or some written feedback in particular on things that are like, hey, you didn't necessarily meet the criteria, but this was really good. And so trying to encourage students to think about more than just meeting the criteria for creative writing and those type of things is particularly important because students can hit all the criteria and the story might not be great or vice versa. But that's sort of the subjectivity of something like that. But I think that narrative grading is excellent. But at the end of the day, you still need to assign a student a letter grade. That's what they're thinking about in terms of college or graduation. And so we're still like locked into that. Is there a day where we will remove letter grades entirely? I don't know, but that's definitely not in the purview of necessarily our district, even because I think when college acceptance is restricted to letter grades, we're like kind of locked into that.
And I appreciate the intentionality of calling the thing that we used to call a test, an assessment. Does that mean the thing that is called an assessment, is it designed differently than a traditional test?
Yeah, so an assessment can be anything that checks students' understanding or mastery. And so sometimes that looks like a test. Sometimes it's like in class, very accurate, do this thing, you have this amount of time. I usually try not to restrict students on time as much as possible, but it's like, you can't do this at home. I want this to be accurate. Sometimes it's take home projects.
Okay.
I think project based learning can definitely lend itself to this. I think of most essays being projects, like individual projects, you go home, you work on it, you're drafting it, you're getting feedback from people. It's in a lot of ways, much more aligned to a project than it is like in class tests. Sometimes there are speeches, sometimes you're creating an artifact or a presentation. There's all kinds of different ways like assessment can look, especially in English. In math, it's usually a test on paper with a time limit because that's sort of the approach to math that's being taken. I'm not a math teacher, but in English, that doesn't really work. You can't really just do in-class tests only. And so I try to vary it as much as possible. Keeping in mind that accuracy and the motivation part, because take home projects tend to be more motivational, or less accurate. In-class assessments tend to be more accurate, but less motivational. And so I try to, for example, each standard have one of each.
I promise this is my my last question. I'm thoughtful about, you know, our relationship with our teachers and one thing that we've heard in the pandemic is teachers have had to do a lot. They they've had to take on a lot and they're burnt out. How do we? Can you provide assurances that this approach doesn't create more work for teachers or it doesn't, you know, are they using more time? And I knew there's only so many hours that, right?
Right, yeah. For me, it's way more work. For, but but I think this is where the term prototyping comes in. It's like, if we can figure out how to do it, it's so easy to be like, here's a model. And that's the thing I've been really appreciative with David and with Vivian before is like, they've been funding and supporting like us prototyping this. We're not at a place where we can turn to the rest of the school and be like, okay, we figured it out. We're not even close to that yet. But we're getting much closer than we were previously. I feel like from my perspective as a teacher, that's like my main mindset is I want to prototype and figure out how to do this so that I can turn to someone who's interested and say, here's how I do it. And it works. And if they're interested, then they can do it that way. And from there, I feel like that's where the grassroots movement can come from. They'll see it works and be like, oh, okay. Like, I had a teacher turn to me the other day who was a math teacher who was trying this and said, at first, I thought this was going to be terrible, but it turns out I like it more. And I was like, good, that's exactly what I was hoping to say. I thought this could have gone a different direction, but for the most part, I think once we figure out how to do it, then it's actually, I think, pretty easy to implement. Primarily because the whole point of this is to sort of have a standard way of teaching in a standard way or or standards specifically we're checking for. So teachers can approach those from their own perspective, but for the most part, I feel like there's a lot of like transfer that happens. Like I've made like 150 rubrics or something. And I've deleted like half of them, but the ones I still have, I can turn to another English teacher and be like, here are the rubrics. They're all common core. They're excellent. And I feel like going forward, this work is very front loaded. And I think that in the end, it's much easier because we're not grading all the homework and classwork every day. I'm grading one or two things a week instead of one or two things a day. And that grading is more meaningful and it's more interesting because these are like good, interesting things. It's not just busy work or it's not just practice work. So I believe in the future, it'll be definitely less work. But it's the front loading part that's difficult. And I will say, I underestimated how much work it would be. I threw out pretty much 100% of my curriculum and started over, which I didn't think I would have to do, but in retrospect, I was like, oh, I was so deep in the traditional grading world, most of what I had.
I I'm just, I'm, thank you. I mean,
Mr. Logan, I really love listening to you answer these questions. I mean, you're so enthusiastic about the the work that you're doing. And I'm really grateful for the time that you've taken to explain it to us in such detail. Quentin, you're next.
Yeah. I have a few questions, but I'll get to those at the end. I really related to the part in your presentation where you, in essence, described that grades really are a high schooler's life, you know? Like, you listed a few examples, sports, dances, those kind of things. Those are like my life, really. And as someone who likes to get involved in every single extracurricular activity he possibly can, there are times where I just simply don't have the time or really the motivation to do that homework or to study for that test. And there have been days where I've been at the high school from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. Like, for anyone doing the math, that's 15 hours. And to get home at 9:30 or 10:00 and have to worry about two hours of homework and studying for a math test tomorrow, that brings us into the AMs for studying. And I just, as a student and as someone who has younger siblings coming up in this district, I just don't think they should be forced to make a choice between taking care of themselves and their mental health and getting enough sleep and getting a good grade and going to college. Like, that just should not even be a choice. And to go off of what Mr. Logan was describing, students and teachers alike have shared that this is something that works for them, especially students. I like to, you know, bring up district ideas to some of my friends and classmates and usually I'm like, oh, what do you think about this? How would this improve your life? It's like, I don't know. And just go back to tapping their phone or going on Instagram. You know, but whenever I talk about the four point grading system with them, they are excited about it because it's something that gives them the opportunity to participate in everything they want to participate in while at the same time getting good grades and going to the colleges that they want. Because in actuality, college is so competitive now that grades just don't cut it anymore. You need extracurricular activities to stand out. You need them. That's just a fact. So I think us developing a system and implementing a system that allows students to get good grades, participate in the extracurriculars that they care about while they still can, while it's free and while they're young, I I think that should be our top priority because the students benefit from this, directly benefit from this. I've benefited from this. And this is something that was implemented my freshman year, two years ago. And I'm already seeing the benefits from this grading practice in my own life. And I'm sure I speak for a lot of the students, especially at the high school, when I say that. And related to that, I I have a few classes that are four point grading system and some that still follow the traditional scale. And I just believe that, yeah, it needs to be completely implemented in order to work. And some of the students here mentioned that. It really does. It it just doesn't work if one of you mentioned they teachers don't include homework in the grade book, but they also don't allow retakes on tests. Like, that just doesn't work. It just needs to be implemented in its entirety in order for it to really reap the best benefits possible from the students. And so I'm glad that there's progress being made on that. I'm excited to see the progress that's going to be made in the future. This is a question that is related and really for the students and and the teachers here. How do you feel about homework counting towards a grade? You kind of touched on that, but this is something that is something students are conflicted about, I know, especially in my personal experience, because like you said, it is nice to have that cushion with the homework, especially finals week is coming up and during finals, having the cushion from homework. But what what do you think about that? And anyone can answer this.
We can pick one of you to answer. Drew, go for it.
Well, a lot of homework that I get is a lot of miscellaneous work in some of my classes that I don't really want to focus all my attention on because I don't think it's as necessary for me to, if I do it, I don't think I need it to learn, like for the test. So I feel like homework that doesn't have, that is just like a lot of busy work isn't really as necessary to do. And I like the cushion. Yeah, sure, if I do it, then it's good. But if you don't do it, then you're just like screwed, you know, it's 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 pretty detrimental to your grade when you don't do your homework and it's worth a lot of work. Is there anything else?
No, that, yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
Great, thank you. Lavender and then Gary again.
I just want to talk about the why again, like when we're talking about the pillars, we're talking about really creating a safe, psychologically safe space for kids, no matter where they're at, to have comprehension of the things we're teaching them so that they can grow up, be well-informed adults that are college and career ready. That's really what it is, right? We're breaking down barriers and breaking down systems that traditionally held down certain groups. And when we look at this as in, we're doing this because this is the right thing to do and important for our kids to be as competitive as they can be in whatever they want to do when they grow up. When you look at the society that we live in and where we live specifically in the Bay Area, which is a tech hub, right? And you look at adult learners and you look at the corporate world, corporate world doesn't give you grades. You fail fast because you want to learn and you want to sell your product and test things out. And it's different, right? You, the world treats you has treated people differently because of our perfectionism. And really, that we're dynamic individuals that learn differently, that have different stuff going on in our lives. And to be able to create that safe space for kids to learn, I mean, really, to to be able to comprehend what we're trying to teach them because they can be great contributors to our society. I mean, that's the goal. So I just want to say that really quickly to remind everyone, the three pillars are so important of the why we're doing this work. And thank you for testing it out because if we don't test it out, we don't fail and learn. So appreciate to all of you for doing that and for you coming to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Whitaker. Gary.
Okay, I'm going to be the bad guy now. It's what you get to be when you're the oldest person in the room. We all think this is great. I mean, clearly, everybody here is sold on this. We think it's great for the students' learning. We think it's great for their mental health. We have concerns about equity if it's not fully implemented. So when are we going to do this? When can we write the board policy? You gave a long answer there a minute ago, and I fully appreciate the hard work that's behind this and all the moving parts that have to be put in place. But could we ask for, you know, another report in three months or could we have some checkpoints out there or some kind of a target date or a progress report? I mean, I heard you say that the math department is pretty much fully on board. I think that's terrific, you know, and I appreciate that it's more difficult in certain areas. But also remember, Mike over here a few minutes ago used a word urgency. And, you know, I would like to inject a degree of urgency into this, so I don't expect an answer here exactly, but I do want to be the bad guy and say, I think we would like to have an answer. I certainly would.
And I, I think that's a fair
Even if not tonight, at some point in the next few months, you know, about where are we? And how can we get there? When can we write the board policy? Or should we be getting at our pins now?
I I think that's a fair question to ask. I do think Mr. Logan had a great point in terms of ensuring that we have the pieces in place before we're fully implemented. And also, I think the students made an excellent point of mentioning that the system, if partially implemented, may not be serving the same purpose that we hoped it would. So a partially implemented system could be more harmful than we would like. That said, there are elements of the system that we've heard tonight that are key pieces, you know, things like retakes that we've heard from everyone as being a critical component. The question is, how do we identify what those components are? And what would those pieces be that would be fair to say we can consistently move forward with? I think it's really important to get the input from teachers who will be actually implementing the system. I think it's fair to say that absolutely at some point in the next several months, set next few months, several months, next few months, we should be able to come back and give you an update on where things stand. I I do think we're making progress. That said, in terms of the expectation that there's full implementation, I think without the partnership of teachers, we'd be in a tough spot. There's also one point that I think that that we we could miss also, and that is where elementary is. And that I think elementary is at a different place, that they've moved faster, part of it being, I think, the number of students that secondary teachers see per day, where you've got several hundred, you know, well over 100 students versus 20 some odd students per day, I think changes some of those pieces in terms of how you're able to to work with with kids and also
how you're able to, to work with, with kids and also that the school sites. So I think we could see different places where elementary is versus secondary at certain points. Ms. Rashichi, I know has been working really hard on the report card and, and potentially revising our elementary report cards. I think that some faster movement might be possible there as well. So again, not to overcommit, but also to say, I, I think there is a shared expectation of having progress this year that would be tangible. I think we could arrive at something that could be an adjustment to board policy this year. However, that would be made, I think, in partnership with where our teachers are, with what really is practical at this point.
So, so I'll just jump in here. I, I think we need to listen to our students. They're telling us what it's important. But the, the importance of the teachers actually understanding what this means and doing it well is also very critical. Otherwise, it then actually backfires and isn't the best support for students. So I, I feel like retake and redos, right? If we're preparing kids for the real world, no one gets fired and gets kicked out of a job because they made a mistake. They're actually told in various industries, try different ways. 15 different times you do something until you get it right. So I think there are things in the equitable grading practices that are kind of a no-brainer, but we've got to do them right. So I agree with everything we heard and I also have the same feeling about having the urgency. Because this is like, this is where the rubber meets the road. This is important stuff for kids. So whatever we can do to support our teachers, such as Mr. Logan just talked about, how much time he has spent to create what you have because the prototype is ready and you can then make it easier for teachers. So whatever we need to do to support people like you to get whatever it is that need to get done. But I would think that in a few, in like three, four months, we come back and just kind of report back. But I, I would say realistically, we can change the board policy and just add a couple of things versus we can actually do something like substantially. I would say if not by the end of the year, but actually next year in the like mid-year. Just to, to be honest, I'm not sure that by the end of this year, we're going to be able to say in there, this is all the stuff we're doing because we do need support. But I think you're, as a board, the urgency you just created tonight and we've talked about is important for people to realize that we've got to spend time from now over the summer. We've always said to our teachers that we would pay them to work, to work on this on their own time over the summer, whether we can get substitutes by kind of getting more into that. So, so we hear the urgency.
That wasn't a bad question at all.
That was actually an excellent question.
To go, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I heard multiple times the talk about mental health and how important that is. And especially as we're coming out of, you know, this incredible pandemic that we all survived and integrating mental health into how we teach our students and how they learn. It's so important and I'm excited that we are on this journey, that you will continue on this journey without me.
Thank you, students. It's whatever. I mean, look, they're here to, to tell their story. So thank you. Thank you for being here. And thank you, Mr. Logan, Ms. Rashichi, our two awesome principals, Mr. Luango, everybody. So thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item. Item D, approval of the certificated substitute rate.
I'd like to move that we approve the certificated substitute rate increase.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved in second. Any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the rate has been approved 5-0. Personnel reports, anything?
No personnel report, other than just staffs working on the report, but I'd also like to add on behalf of what I've been witnessing in Castro Valley as a resident for 16 years, watching the board very closely. Now I'm on the other side, you all are watching me very closely. But I want to thank President Theodore for her service. We've crossed paths and volunteered as band parents with my wife, Karina, helping out our, our own children go through the program. So thank you for your service. Really, really appreciate it.
Does anyone want to move the personnel report?
I move to approve the personnel report.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mike, your vote, please? No, he can't vote. Oh, he, okay, he can't move it. Okay.
Oh, oh, ooh.
I'll move to approve the personnel report.
Thank you.
The only, the only thing he can't is personnel. But you, you actually approved such an important thing, the soccer fields. That is awesome.
Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. So the personnel report has been approved. Board member reports. Quentin, do you have anything to add to your report?
Yes, I do. I just want to take a moment to thank you, Dot. And start off with a little story. After I was elected at the high school a few months ago, the current school board rep at the time, Jennifer Me, was giving me a little rundown on all the board members. Oh, there's, there's Mike, there's Gary, blah, blah, blah. And then she said, and then there's Dot. She's the president, by the way. She's the one with the cool hair, the nice outfits, you know, she's, she's that person, you know? And I, that, Dot Theodore was a familiar name to me. Like I forget who said it exactly, but everyone knows, everyone knows you. And I knew you as a student before I was even on the board. And once I officially became a part of the board, the respects that you showed me and the acceptance just means so much to me. And the commitment you've given to this district over the past eight years. I mean, I, I don't, I don't mean this in any negative way, but to put that in perspective, I was a third grader when you were elected. I mean that in the best way possible. It's just so incredible, so incredible. And I speak for every single student who has been in this district during your time on the board. When I say thank you for your incredible service and for everything you've done for this district. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for those kind words.
Hi, everyone. I did have an opportunity to visit the high school. Took a day off and was with Mr. Horton Berry. I was really just impressed with what a remarkable leader we have serving us at the high school right now. His connection with our students was so natural. And that was just really inspiring to see and was just, I appreciate him for welcoming me, welcoming, welcoming, I can't speak. Welcoming me there and during sort of the chaos and the running of school and we, we, we bumped into each other while we were there as well. So that was a wonderful experience. I was able to go to Shri Karama at Chabot Elementary School. And one thing that just really stood out to me was how many middle schoolers were there? And I, for my, both my, my, my sons, I think being able to go back to something that they missed during the pandemic was really special and it was, it was, there were a lot of people there. So it was wonderful to see the, the, the parent volunteers and everyone bringing that together. Last night, we went to Creekside Middle School and it was wonderful to see that group rebuilding their, 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 their parent teachers club and really focusing on how they can serve the community. And they are, they're looking for a treasurer. So if anyone would like to be a treasurer for, for them, they, they are looking. I am looking forward to learning more about TB TIP, our induction program. At the end of the month, I will be spending some time with, with, with that cohort and getting to know them and, and learning more about induction. I want to extend my thanks to Dot as well. And two things that are really important to me. I think of you as a catalyst in my personal life. You push me to knock on doors, have conversations with people, to see things in this community that many people don't see and try to be an agent for change. And I'm grateful for that. I look over to our superintendent here and that's the other catalyst I'm so proud of that you helped make happen. And I want to thank you for that. You have been a catalyst in the school district, Castro Valley Unified on this board. And I, I'm grateful for that. And I want to thank you and wish you luck and wish you well. Thank you.
Okay, so Parveen and I attended the, excuse me, the Proctor PTA meeting last week, and that was a very interesting meeting, a lot of questions, comments and so forth. We had a good time there. I was at the Eden Area ROP Governing Board Meeting last week and I passed out to everybody, only had a few copies of it, their new annual report. But if you're interested in it, they, I don't know if they have it up quite yet, but it'll be on their website. And it's a very nice report. They do a lot of great work over there, of course. They do have one thing of particular interest to, to us here is they are starting their sophomore tours. Every year they take all the software, any sophomore who wants over to the main campus at his, on the Sperry and Avenue across from Chabot College and show them all around the campus over there and the possibilities there. This year, they're going to start taking juniors as well who are interested because some students decide that they want to join ROP as seniors and that's a good thing. And just one reminder, the light parade is on Saturday, Saturday evening. It's a lot of fun down there. A lot of schools have joined in this year, which is really terrific. That's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. And yeah, thanks, Dot. You know, we've worked together for eight years now. I appreciate everything you've done and you know, I'm, I'm really not that sad because I have your phone number and I know where you live and I'm sure we'll be expecting great things out of you in the future, even when you're not.
Don't make me block your phone.
We'll be after you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
So I was out of town for most, or a good portion of the times from the last boarding, board meeting to this. So I don't have anything anywhere where I represented the board. I am setting up time to meet with the PACB, you know, in the next week or so with another board member with Mike and to, you know, go and see a few different sites and a few different programs.
I have not represented the board, but I am looking forward to meeting with Hard tomorrow at Canyon. And just so this board knows, I will be flying to LA to visit the kid for the weekend, but I'll still be available by email and phone.
Thank you. Well, my last board report, and I typed something so I don't forget what I want to say. Eight years ago, we had two people of color representing this diverse school district. After today, we will have none. Diversity on our school board has been systematically reversed, leaving us with an all-white school board for the first time in three decades. A board of all white people are now controlling the future of our majority non-white students. This should not sit well with anyone. It has been the honor of my life to serve our community, to work hard for equity, to bring my diverse perspective, to always put our students first. I am proud of the work that we have done together and the amazing staff and community members that have drawn together to do this work. This work has changed me, has made me fiercer and more determined to lift up those who have had their voices silenced or ignored. My work continues, but it will look different. Thank you for the honor. Meeting adjourned.